Good evening. This is the regular meeting of Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Thursday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty one. Same decorum. This meeting is officially called to order. Nonrecording secretary, please take your call.
Commissioner Magna?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yeah.
Commissioner Russell?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wu?
Yeah.
Commissioner Flores?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gallegos? Thank you, have a forum.
Thank you. Please rise and attend the meetings. I'm glad that we had to see the reply of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington for nation under our individual liberty and justice law. Thank you. At this time, members of the public, we address the Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by the law. Does the public have any comments they wish to share with the commission? Please note that you have free to speak.
I have two public speakers in the audience and no one in the diasum. I have Veronica Gomez.
Hello, I just would like to introduce myself. My name is-
Can you come to the microphone, please?
Thank you. First, I'm Veronica Gomez. And I'm not familiar with organizations as now, but I'm going to sit and see how the process works. And in a variety of organizations, developing the process of credits over the time. And we've been involved for about three years already in the process of credits with cultural events. And I just wasn't very very proud of first time. And I need to validate everyone as to how the process is. We see this our this chamber and to lead that to invite people who have our experience.
And next we have Victor Fayen.
Hello, it's good to see you all, arts commissioners and the chair in person. Thanks for taking on the work and what's worked here. I'm looking at the creatures and so. Okay, so a couple of things. I just wanted to let you all know that we have a really wonderful club hosted. Yes, it was virtual this year. We had, you know, presenters and films and audiences from all across the country. Very excited about that platform that we're using. We're going to do a year-round visiting programs virtually. Some great things lined up. And we're also, we completed two of our three millennial producers academy workshops, which are for you thirteen seventeen years old. And we'll be launching at thirty in the middle of December. So if you go to my site, tomorrow will be the signup for the more information. Signups will be there, but I'll give you information tomorrow. So I wanted to also talk about putting on a different kind of United Arts Center. That was one of the arts center. But we submitted a letter a couple of meetings ago regarding a perceived conflict of interest in the South Bay arts grants. And I just wanted to follow up with that saying that I've served as a panelist on city, county, and state review panels. Additionally, I administer national arts grant programs for national arts organization. And my experience has mattered over the back of twenty years. I served on the Capital Arts Council, I'm a review there, as their guidelines for best practices. And so we all know that the typical standard conflict of interest is one year when they get to work with somebody or receive money for somebody. But there's also apparent conflict of interest. And an apparent conflict of interest is designed by the state as situations where a panelist feels undermoved by it or has a personal affiliation with the applicant. Apparent conflict includes significant personal or professional adversary or active relationships, which a panelist impartial judgment may be in paracord received if ignored. And unlike regular conflicts of interest, there is no time limit for an apparent conflict of interest. And so a conflict of interest is going to look so serious that basically it says that if you don't declare at the beginning of the process, then the panelist is asked to resign and they're not allowed to split any of the proposals. So I had some suggestions because we received retaliations and other kinds of words from one of the commissioners involved for bringing this attention. But we will not be deterred by ruling or deter any member of the public from stating the truth, especially where it involves the city giving permission or a lot of the money. So we ask that the commissioners review the ethics rules so they can maintain equity and integrity of the commission. Set the tone from the very beginning of the chair, reduce itself from one of the grants. It's very the right thing to do. The arts commissioners should not be panellists for arts grants. This happened the first year and it caused some problems then. Commissioners should declare their conflicts and the panelists' scores should be reduced or all that information is discovered.
Thank you.
We don't have anyone else.
Okay, thank you. This is the time for the commission to consider matters under consent calendar, items one and two. Do I have a motion to consider items one and two?
Any motion?
Thank you, Vice Chair Hernandez. Does anyone second the motion? I second. Thank you, Commissioner Russell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter approved? Oh, the matter is approved by one hundred percent. By all votes, are we unanimous consensus? Thank you. Okay. We will now consider matters under the business calendar. We have one item under the business calendar, item number three, approval of Arts and Culture Special and Sponsorship Funding List for November twenty twenty one. Will staff report on the matter?
Yes, thank you Chair. I'm there. As you all received your individual assignments to do to rate the scores and this will be the first time publicly that you'll be seeing all the scores compiled. Please look at the charts in front of you. And please, although you haven't already, the charts are available up here, up in the desk up here. And so you'll see that there has been a total out of eleven applications that have been submitted. The total of four has been approved with funding and eight have not been approved with funding. However, I want to note that for all applications that have been declined, everybody has the option to continue to submit the proposals for the following round. Yeah, until if and when you are, if you are then approved after that. So the first application, this is in no particular order. It was just how it came in, how, when it was submitted, the order it was submitted. And so the first application that was approved is Conscious Culture Collective for the event called November International Women's Day Festival. The event date will be March twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. There are four yeses and two noes. The amount requested was five thousand and the amount approved is four thousand seven hundred fifty. The second applicant that was, has been approved is the Frida Cinema. Event title is Classics on French. Event date is from January twenty twenty-two until June twenty twenty-two. There are six yeses and zero noes. The amount requested is fifteen thousand, the amount approved is eight thousand five hundred forty-three. And just to also recap on the, how the approved amount was calculated, it was the average of the adjusted amounts submitted by the commissioners who approved the application. So here, in this case, six commissioners approved with different adjusted amounts. And then that was totaled and the average of that was, is the approved amount. The third applicant that was approved is Central City Labor Association. The event title is Caminos. Event date is June fourth, two thousand twenty-two. The event approved, was approved with four yeses and two noes. The amount requested was three thousand five hundred. The amount approved was three thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. And the final applicant that was approved is from Tula Productions. The event title is Let's Move As One. The event date is January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And that was approved with four yeses and two noes. The amount requested was ten thousand dollars and the amount approved was four thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. So that leaves the final amount that still remains to be distributed for sponsorships is seventy-nine thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars. Do you have any questions or anything, or if any commissioners would like to make any short comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments. So I believe that some of these went down to the three and three votes, right? So after the commission, it's, were supported and had was not. And as we decided, we said that if that were the case, that it would automatically fail. It's similar to what the council does, so it does make sense. But for those that apply, I would just suggest reaching out individually to commissioners and to see in which ways you can improve those applications. Because many times I voted against them, not because they weren't good ideas. Most and not all were great ideas, but rather because they weren't very well thought out. It was overly ambitious. Or just there wasn't the process of what was getting paid and how it was coming about. This was not as thorough as, as the others that were approved. So there's, there's a lot of time. I encourage everybody to, to apply. Again, you can keep on applying and improving your application. That I think is the key part here. So that we can give more, it's twenty hours, seventy-nine thousand. There's still time to go, but you know, there's, I think that was one thing that I wanted to make clear. And also that it's important to let the little guy, you know, have access to funds rather than, you know, the big fish in, in, in the pond, as it were. And it's constantly an issue with nonprofits that the larger ones or ones that have the relationships are able to get this one model of this. And not often do community groups or small folks that are just starting to get their feet wet into event planning, cultural work, do they get the kind of access? Lastly, I just say that there's a lot of more people and artists in the city that should apply and they need to get on it. And so it's, it's upon all of us to make sure that we reach out to our networks and, you know, our community to make sure that they, they know about this, because maybe they've been in the town too. As I mentioned, somebody, it is probably the easiest application that one in the history of applications for money. And that it's not taken, you know, taken advantage of. It's sat by, I just think people need to get the money. That include my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Are there any other comments, just to my members?
Yes, I would like to, in general sense, that the applications that had the greatest amount of originality really appealed to me. So there were some that had a kind of a generic quality, which was just providing access to the arts. But I, I just really resonated with me the ones that continued something that was unique to San Ana. It was very localized. And I would really encourage folks to continue thinking that way. I would also be very specific about how you want to spend the money. Because for some of the applications, it wasn't very clear. You know, it was large enough money and you were pretty sure where to go. And then the last piece was simply that sometimes the marketing, the money was specific or the budget was line item or detailed by line item. The marketing budget seemed a bit more corporate, I think. And so I was concerned that money that was hopefully going to artists and for creative people. And not to say that marketers are not creative, but you know, I'd much rather give that to artists than to somebody making t-shirts or something like that. So for future applicants, please keep those things in mind. But again, they had a great range of different projects from film to dance to, you know, supporting different poetry, it was in my backside. I'm just really excited to see all the ideas that were presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Any other comments? Come ahead, Commissioner Flores.
Yes, I'd just like to go back on that point of the working self-application. I think that'll be a lot better for us. You know, the better you compete that picture of what you want to do in your event, I think that'll give us a clearer idea of what's going to happen. It'll help us determine whether it's something we want to perform with or not. I also was glad to see the diversity, the thanks of the men's. And hopefully, there's a lot more people that apply.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Commissioner?
Yes, I've concluded all of your commissioner comments. And I'd love to add that I didn't have so a lot of the events in the focus on that time. And the ones that were focused, what I had in mind that was outside of the town was that Bruce Adams. For example, I know that one specifically turned in one when where I live in one hundred percent. And I really believe that the progress of our, I think, of our sponsorships on the NAC that used to last in the city to be underfunded and would, here are a few shots, I can see one of you. The resource is inside, I know it is. I would, like in the back, if you are not facing one town, target together your applications so that you can put together an impressive that has a higher weight on. And certainly that the other wards, the other places that are not central to the city can still get a reach, getting the people or the tenants that you want. And especially the, the funding part, the more you break it down, the more I'm able to understand what exactly is your asking sponsorship for? You want sponsorship for your entire land? Are you asking sponsorship for a particular part to the event? That you really want the city to be a supporter? And if it's that anymore, I'm much more clearly able to say, yes, I'm worth this or no, I'm not really sure, please revise your application in the back. Come back to us if you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair Gallegos?
So the way that I approach this was, I need to priority first of when the event was happening. So if it's happening this month, next month, in January, those are the ones that are the ones that priority to the thing punch right away. However, that does not mean that I wouldn't like to see the other ones that did a little note, like see the next one or, you know, a couple of months from now. That's pretty important to me. The one thing that I was concerned about is the first Saturday art block I was thinking. Even if it's not the amount that they are requesting that we might provide for them, I think that's something that really drives a lot of people from surroundings to San Ana if that part why. So I think that even if we can't give them the full amount, I think something maybe accept that way. As for other ones, the other projects I see on there, again, as some of the commissioners are saying, the more detailed that it was in terms of how we want to spend the money, the more I was inclined to say yes. So I'd like to see it on the future projects, if you guys can.
Thank you, all the commissioners and their thoughtful, detailed, thorough considerations, many of which I have shared. And I want to underscore that some of the things that I looked at were multiple dates that were submitted when I think we're looking at a current submission as well, just to add that. And also considering the distribution of awards across the wards. So, so again, encouraging people to reapply and consider all the things the commissioners have provided as guidance for everyone. So thank you. All right, do I have a motion to approve item three, approval of Arts and Culture Special and Sponsorship Funding List for November twenty twenty-one? Oh, and by the way, I'm sorry, before we do more. Do, just to clarify, this is a continuing application process. The application is open on our website. People can continue to apply every month. We'll discuss this at our meetings moving forward until that three thousand dollars is, is allocated, correct?
Correct, Chair. And also I'd like to add that for those who did not see funding this time around, please feel free to contact me. If there are any comments that would be useful for your application, I will share that.
Thank you very much. Okay, back to my original question. Do I have a motion to approve item three, approval of Arts and Culture Special and Sponsorship Funding List for November twenty twenty-one? Motion. Thank you, Commissioner Wu. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Gallegos. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you, unanimous consent. Does the staff have any comments they wish to share with the commission?
Yes, I actually have two comment, two updates. The first one is great news. One of the items that you have requested from city council or just from the Arts and Culture Office to have happened is the Arts and Economic Prosperity Report that's conducted by the Americans for the Arts. So that is approved. However, the deadline has been extended into January twenty twenty-two. That's the deadline of from Americans for the Arts. So we won't be able to start that until then. But the funding from the economic development budget has been in form with this project. So we anticipate that the project will start in February of two thousand twenty-two. And we definitely need all of your participation and contacts to make this, the data collection successful and impactful. Because we have to collect a minimum of eight hundred surveys from different arts organizations in order for, for them to generate a useful report for us for the city. And then as my second update is that the WILTS Southern unveiling celebration has been postponed until Saturday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. So please mark that in your comments. Did you read that? The date? Saturday, January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. And it's from ten to two, yeah. Yes.
I would like, I would like to know, you said that we need eight hundred organizations to kind of, as well to kind of look at the information from. Does that include just, let's say, a private kind of artist who kind of looks in itself as an organization?
Yes, hopefully we do, just collect all folks who come to the city for, or participate in arts events and how they spend their money, things like that. So we can gauge the economic impact of arts events and our happenings in our city. How much money is the city bringing in because of arts, of the arts?
One clarification to Commissioner Gallegos, it's not eight hundred organizations. It's a minimum of eight hundred surveys of artists and arts and cultural organizations and institutions that we need to approve to have input. We hope to get more. Are there any other comments from the commission that you wish to share? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm curious if there is, will be any kind of outreach events or opportunities that the commissioners can engage in or should stay in a discussion for a moment? Should we consider, we can, should we get as many surveys as possible?
Yes, yes and yes. So yes, there will, that would be the way, reach out. And yes, we will put it on the agenda when it gets more, is closer to the date.
Any other comments?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Any comments on this matter?
There's comments in there.
Um, the comments, yeah.
Yeah. Comments on this matter. Okay. Thank you. This is the time for commission member comments. Does the commission have any comments they wish to share? Go ahead, Commissioner. Yes, we do. Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, so first of all, it's really good to be here in person. Ten years, you know, the other side of the dice. Meanwhile, I mean personally, my arc of this career, I haven't been, I haven't seen here in the city by God and to be married in, in one from today. So yeah, just really happy to be a part of the change. It's been so passionately over here since. And happy to be with all of the fellow commissioners as well, who also care for our city. I wanted to, first of all, I wanted to thank us staff for allowing us to have this available resumes of folks that wanted to participate, who could have, although we not have it today. But I'm sure in future, there will be other items and, you know, other ones of the reports or posts that will, cannot attend in person for various reasons. I think it's the right thing to do to promote people's safety. I'd also say that November thirteenth, I will be attending a presentation uh from the students of the University of Wisconsin, uh Professor uh Ricardo Salamendo. Uh he's been gracious enough to help us uh in looking at our uh our arts master plan so that we can think about ways in which uh which we can implement any of the the great uh ideas that we have. And I need staff on some of those activities that perhaps might have been missing, looking at other cities in the way to pay them. So I will report back on that. If any commissioner wants to attend, as long as we stay within that round act of rules, then please reach out to me. Uh so I also want to uplift the day of the dead events that we recently had here in San Antonio. We are, uh when I was uh in charge of uh or part of the committee that put that note that that is on, we have thirty or forty thousand people enjoying our beautiful, beautiful uh here in San Antonio that's unique, you know, it's a lot of Mexican culture, it's also Chicano culture. And it's just San Antonio, it's a Panera, it's a Panera, it's a Panera's culture. So just really happy when when that is back. Uh that that continues to be, you know, just a highlight, a main highlight that we have here as far as arts and culture in San Antonio. Um and I, you know, unfortunately, I I have to address the comments that we made. Remember, uh the United Artists, is that not a member? Oh, yeah. Still here. Um and all the folks that signed on to that slanderous letter. Um I'm just really disturbed, disappointed, uh and at a loss of words, really, you know, for the moment when it's really exciting to be here, you know, just kind of realize uh the challenge of serving in the office and the fact that people can say all sorts uh negative or or untrue things about you and just have to take it. But I wanted to say that I reached out to staff as far as art, I wrote and the commissioner that were that was uh named in that. And I mean, our actions were completely ethical, completely ethical. So I would like to give that those these comments and emails to seize the lead. Uh because frankly, this is the kind of uh the things that happen in our arts community that divide us uh and and create this animosity that has been brewing uh for years in our arts scene here in San Antonio. And sadly, it's because a lot of it has to do with people's personal vendettas, year-long vendettas against other members. You can shake your head all you want, but it's a fact. Might let you know, yeah, they you might have not those sort of unkind comments I made about uh yourself and your organization. But that that is a truth. There's a lot of opportunists in our community, a lot of people that are willing to to, they don't want to see other people rise, you know, and so that is the case here. Although obviously, I'm, you know, passionate in taking this uh matter personally, because that's not, that's not why we get into this. To get into the middle of personality disputes between people, when we're trying to do the right thing. So my actions were ethical, uh and you know, by according to staff, according to the leading counsel of this uh commission. And so uh hopefully, moving forward, we can seize from these kinds of attacks upon myself and other people. And you have your chance to speak, so you can just be quiet. And that would be my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. I do need to add, uh commission members, please note that no member may sleep more than once until all of them have an opportunity to sleep. Also, the commission may leave their comments three minutes each. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Rosson?
Yes, um I'd like to extend my support to Commissioner Hernandez or Vice Chair, Vice Chair Hernandez. Uh because I do, I'm concerned that um you know, the arts, artists are very um a very vulnerable community. They always have economic support that they need. Uh and so to compound that 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 issue um with um negativity and negative publicity um and animosity is very hurtful. And I just want to say that, you know, as representatives of the Santa Ana community and here to represent the artists, we take those actions very seriously. Um and I I want to be a, I want to be a a vehicle for promoting, um as you said, you know, our our um not the big fish, but you know, our artists who who are vulnerable and need our support if they can't thrive and need to become very successful, they do. Um and so I think that would definitely be the the respect that I take is trying to help support um those who are doing good things and bringing positivity to our city. Making our city more beautiful, not more antagonistic. Uh because we definitely don't want to be known as a community of artists who fight against each other for real pieces of, you know, crimes. Uh we want to give place that you can come Santa Ana and know who's supported, who's supported by our city, who's supported by the people who um represent and work on behalf of our city, and who's supported by any artist that you encounter in the city. Uh I want that to be a reputation. I just have the great pleasure of bringing um school leaders to Santa Ana uh just two nights ago. Um and you know, uh from all over in the state of California, there's a research conference happening here in Orange County. And I just felt a little trade pride to say, uh I'm bringing you here to be part of the arts world. A place that contains, you know, just great innovation, uh because we are trying to help promote innovation and non-studiers. So I just want to credit that and make sure that that's that's the the theme that we're offering as a team.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosson. Any other commission comments, Commissioner Gairos?
Um so this is uh in regards to the applications, um once again. I wanted to know, first of all, the application uh deadline was for this round uh was obviously for last month, right? This month, it'll be a brand new deadline, end of this month? Okay, uh I again, I wonder if you have your events coming up in January and you did not get approved this time. Really, really urge you to please submit it again in the exact same month. Because uh again, I I wanted to look at where we're going to be in terms of funds. But now that I've seen that we have quite a few left, I mean, that's really fantastic. So I definitely want to encourage you, please, please, please do that again. Uh and then also, something that we had spoken about uh last meeting was in regards to, we wanted to come up with kind of like a I guess a place where we can get the information of many artists, because I know that we all have our own kind of our little resources. But I met someone around like twenty people and they're like, oh, a lot of artists actually shop that on T-Book. So uh because I thought it was just going to be specialty art stores, but I'm not an artist, so that's not the case. Uh so if you guys have anybody that wants to reach out to me personally or me, um I I'd love to see uh how I can, you know, shoot out these emails of like, hey, here's some money, please save it. You know, I I'd love to do that. So thanks.
Thank you. I have any comments? Okay, Commissioner Ford?
Actually, I have a question, sir. Um in regards or actually, I don't know if we're allowed to discuss this together or not. The program that we just mentioned that approved, that we do the surveys, um would any good schools, you know, and their, please give us a program?
Yes, it would include any kind of part.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the commissioners and their comments. I appreciate the sentiments and I appreciate commissioners taking on courageous leadership. It is really challenging to make yourself a public figure. And I stand with you and support everyone in our efforts to bring good level to our arts community. So I appreciate your service. And I a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. I'm very excited about Economic Impact Survey. That will help us get the data that we need to drive the arts as an economic engine in this community. It's really important because it's going to be the foundation of many of the things. Oops, I'm sorry, I turned myself up. It's going to be at many of the things that my Vice Chair Hernandez is talking about to be able to implement our Arts and Culture Strategic Plan, which is in its fifth year of the ten-year approval. And we don't have any funding. So we're looking for ways to be able to do that. Another thing is that um that I would like to encourage everybody to save the date for December fourth. We are having uh some arts now advocacy at the Free Cinema from on December fourth and eleven to two. It'll be the first of many going on continuously to bring artists together to share what's happening in the community in a kind of a culture format. We'll have everything from youth arts leaders to uh Alicia Rojas, who has been awarded some incredible brands from California Arts Council. She's represented in Santa Ana in so many ways. We get to hear from her and many others. So there will be opportunity every month for artists to share and uh convene and commune, which I think we have been missing for a long time. So I'm looking forward to that happening. I also would like to encourage everybody to consider giving their input to the LCAP survey. That's a local control action plan for the school districts of Santa Ana, made by the school district. Now's the time to have your input. I think it's it's a little through December tenth. And if you want more information, please feel free to reach out to me. Uh then you can give impact input about the arts and culture in the school district and educational program. So we really do want artists to see that. And we do want our community and family to know how important the arts are for us all and starting pipelines. Because our vision is to have pipelines from the schools into the arts community here now. Because there's a lot of the rich pipelines are developing and we want to continue to develop those. I also am was pleased to hear that Charlotte Santa Ana is coming in to brand market our fair city. Has really recognized and seen what incredible rich arts and culture we have here in Santa Ana. And so I'm looking forward to seeing how that gets elevated and amplified because we do really have some very unique and special things about Santa Ana arts and culture. So I appreciate, and that's what I wanted to share. I appreciate the great comments. Um did anybody have any final comments before the cards? Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
Yes, we do have that. I think we're going to have to cover this one. Um first of all, I do want to say, I also support the whole commissioners here on um advice, that I do want to encourage us all in this endeavor to um forego the perspective of arts as a title. Um just while while we're sources are currently available because of the unknown and unknown pictures that we have, the goal of the Arts Culture Commission here um is not to eliminate them, it's to be as good as we can and to give resources that are to be given there for. Um and given that that the the arts community business in the arena are very tricky, um it is is always going to be somewhere bad, somewhere not bad. And that's inescapable. Despite that, though, we can still be as thorough as we can be, and be as impartial as we can be and still do our duties as commissioners on this mission. Um I would like also to thank staff for figuring our role to make sure that this is um online as well for YouTube and through uh Zoom as well as in person. I really truly believe that the more people we hear from during these meetings, the more input we have during these meetings, the more successful we can be as a commission. Uh I encourage each other, people along. I encourage there to be more people asleep. Uh concerning the ones I was in in March and April, and I only had ten speakers come up. While we're a little bit long, I I should really welcome hearing so many different diverse perspectives. And I would love to have that continue. Um and if you have any questions about what this is like, uh feel free to reach out to the transatlantic, reach out to me in particular. Um and I will give you what as honest a um statement as I can. As someone who took down some few of the smartest organizations in the country, it's quite interesting. Uh but I can give you that very honest perspective of someone who has been in this room before and tell you what it is like. Um and um my final comment is just a very usual. I did receive a message from someone who um tuned into YouTube and they mentioned that the audio quality is not poor. Um so if you're trying to check that the next time, I think you would make sure to let somebody come and be able to let other show with someone who is checking.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right. Given that, this meeting is officially adjourned. Thanks again to all of the staff who are supporting us and our arts and culture community. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December sixteenth at five thirty P M in Live Church. Thank you.
Thank you.